Okay, I think we're ready to start. We're going to call the special CRA board meeting to order on Tuesday, February 17th. It is 5:36. And we'd like to start with a roll call, please.
Gary Taylor, Chair.
Here.
Joe Fassell, Vice Chair.
Here.
Buck Cannon.
Here.
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 Matt Cray.
Here.
Yes.
Thank you. We have a call. We are here to have a discussion on the investigation report of Board Member David Merker. At this time, I am going to turn it over to Christine Hanley, who did the investigation for us. And Mr. Spilius, would you like to say something first?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Let me just introduce Ms. Hanley at the direction of the board. I did reach out and spoke with several attorneys who do this type of work and ultimately determined that, for this board's purposes, Ms. Hanley from the firm of Ford Harrison had the best background and neutrality for doing this project. So at this time, you have received, I know all of you have received, the written report and a separate letter with recommendations that she has made coming out of the report and out of her investigation. So I'd like to introduce Ms. Hanley to you for her to give you her oral report and answer any questions.
Right, counsel, excuse me. Before she come, I need to know how much does this cost? You know, are we being billed?
I don't have that number yet, Mr.
I asked the Director this afternoon, I'm just saying.
Yes, well, Ms. Hanley's not had the time to develop her invoice and send it to me, so I don't have it either. Certainly after tonight's meeting, we'll get that information to you as quickly as possible.
That's what I need, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. Mr. Chairman and members, my name is Christine Hanley, and as Mr. Spilius has just explained, I was retained by the CRA to investigate a claim of improper touching and improper behavior made by CRA Director Vivian Brooks.
I don't think they can hear you. Can you need it a little louder?
Take it to the mic.
All right. Any better?
Not really. Not much.
All right, I hope I didn't disrupt the wires when I moved the lectern before.
You're fine.
I'll start again from the top. Christine Hanley, and as Mr. Spilius explained, I was retained by the CRA to investigate a claim of improper touching and improper behavior that was raised by CRA Director Vivian Brooks as to the behavior of Board Member David Merker. I was provided with information regarding the complaint, an email that Ms. Brooks sent to Commissioner Merker, attorneys Spilius and Dewey, roughly two weeks after the incident occurred. Background as far as what had happened in the interim, the meeting that was facilitated, if you will, by attorneys Spilius and Dewey in order to resolve matters. I took a look at the tapes of this meeting, at which there was a great deal of discussion about the incident and what could possibly happen. And then I embarked on the investigation in earnest. In order to do that, I reviewed the CRA's handbook, their papers, if you will, their governance papers, information regarding the interlocal agreements in between the city and the CRA, select Florida statutes, and I interviewed every employee of the CRA. The first individual that I interviewed was Vivian Brooks. We spent time to learn, so that I could learn, the nature of the complaint, the duration, and the different dimensions associated with the behavior about which she complained. Following my interview of Vivian Brooks, each and every employee of the CRA was interviewed to get their perspective and to learn whether or not they had experienced any behaviors which they found problematic. And I use problematic very generally here because in this kind of investigation, what we don't want to do is to put words or notions in individuals' heads, okay? We wanted to hear what they had to say. Sometimes people find good morning problematic. Sometimes folks find other things problematic. In any event, the long and short of it was, following my interview of all the employees of the CRA, I met with City Manager Lori Laveria in order to determine the legal relationship between the CRA and the city, and to ensure that the statutory authority upon which I believed we were traveling was the appropriate one. And to go back and restate that, so that, to make that part clear, the CRA has less than 10 employees. It is a very productive organization with very few people. The statutory schemes that generally underpin the law attendant to discrimination and harassment usually become effective when an organization has 15 or more employees. Without 15 employees, an organization may fall outside the protections of either Title VII of the Civil Rights Act, a federal statute of 1964, or the Florida Civil Rights Act. In Florida, though, there is another statutory scheme that appears in Section 112 of Florida statutes that provides protections to essentially all government employees that they may not be discriminated against on account of, among other things, sex. And the most important part about that statutory scheme is that if an employee is protected under the statutory scheme, there can be no retaliation against employees who complain about discrimination or improper behavior, or those who would participate in an investigation by perhaps providing, or being interviewed and providing information regarding that. So in addition to the Section 112 statutory scheme regarding discrimination, there's also the whistleblower statute under which we travel, which again provides protections for individuals who come forward to complain about a violation of a law, rule, or regulation. And the whistleblower protection is as important as the discrimination section because the whistleblower statute, the public sector whistleblower statute, provides protections for individuals who come forward not only with an actual, with knowledge, or excuse me, with a complaint of an actual violation of a law, rule, or regulation, but if they have a good faith belief that there would be a violation of a law, rule, or regulation. So regardless, and I share this with you now, because regardless of how this investigation had turned out, the individuals who came forward and who participated in the complaint, or in the process, in the investigative process, are protected from retaliation on account of bringing forward those complaints or participating in those processes. In any event, excuse me, in any event, the investigation proceeded, and to make a not-so-long story short, the information that I received from the individuals that I interviewed regarding Board Member Merker's behavior was ultimately confirmed in every relevant respect by Commissioner Merker with a single exception. And that was whether or not he had inappropriately, or whether or not he had touched CRA Director Brooks on the posterior on the 23rd. And that is ultimately the credibility determination that I had to make, right? If you have looked at your report, you will see that there is a credibility determination with respect to that finding, and with respect to a second finding, which I would like to, with your permission, read into the record. The two questions presented were whether Merker touched Brooks inappropriately on December 23rd, 2014, and whether Merker engaged in inappropriate or improper behavior with the staff of the CRA throughout his tenure as a CRA Director. The answer to both of those questions was answered in the affirmative. With respect to question one, did Merker touch Brooks inappropriately on December 23rd, 2014? The answer is yes. Although Merker denies that he touched Brooks' backside as he was leaving the CRA on December 23rd, 2014, I credit Brooks' version of the day's events. Merker's pattern of behavior with Brooks that included inappropriate comments and unwanted touching, despite ongoing advice from Brooks that the behavior was inappropriate, remained unabated. Merker knew or should have known that the behaviors and comments were not appropriate and otherwise should have refrained from continuing with such behavior and comments as soon as Brooks advised him that they were not welcome. As to the second question, did Merker engage in inappropriate or improper behavior with the staff of the CRA throughout his tenure as a CRA Director? That question is again answered in the affirmative, yes. Given his position as CRA Board Member, Merker's behavior towards staff was at best off-putting and at worst harassing. Merker's unremitting comments directed to and about staff as to their dress, appearance, religion, marital status, and ability to arrange dates, among others, was neither requested nor desired by staff. Moreover, his frequent and scheduled visits to the CRA were in clear contradiction of the rules. Now, I can answer questions regarding the report or the findings, or I can move to the recommendations that you all asked me to make.
Anybody have any questions on the two findings that were read into the record?
I just have one question. Were any males, like the Assistant Director, Mike Simon, was he?
Every employee of the CRA was interviewed, including Mike Simon and Christopher Burdick.
Okay, was any of the Board members?
The Board members were not involved, were not interviewed.
I just cut this about a half an hour ago, so I haven't had a chance to read it.
No worries.
If there aren't any other questions, go ahead.
There was no indication, if I might just flesh that out, there was no indication in Mrs. Brooks' complaint that any other Board members, other than Board Member Merker, were involved in the behavior or had actual knowledge of Board Member Merker's activities at the CRA.
Mr. Fitzpatrick and Commissioner Hay, Board Members.
Well, my question is, why weren't other Board members interviewed? Because, you know, we've seen Mr. Merker on many occasions.
The complaint, as presented by Ms. Brooks, is the complaint that was investigated. You may have some knowledge, but you did not bring forward a complaint, if you will. The single person that did bring forward a complaint regarding Board Member Merker's behavior was Ms. Brooks, and her complaint is the complaint that was investigated. She did not indicate that any other Board members were present that day, had actual knowledge of anything that had occurred with respect to meetings in which she was with Board Member Merker. And so it seemed appropriate to limit the investigation as it was.
But that criteria you just stated doesn't apply to Mr. Spilius, for instance. He wasn't there that day, and I don't know if all the other CRA employees were there that day, and yet you interviewed all them.
She complained about improper behavior not only with respect to her, but with respect to her staff, and that is why they were interviewed.
Board Member Hay?
Along those same lines, as I look at who was interviewed, I noticed they were all CRA, except for getting direction from the City Manager. I'm just curious as to, did you not inquire whether or not the city employees were also involved in this? Because if I've heard it, I'm sure that it's others that have heard it. And I just wondered why only the CRA and not the city employees were included in your investigation.
As far as I know, there is no city employee that has raised a formal complaint regarding Commissioner Merker, regarding Board Member Merker.
So you only investigate if they come forward with the formal complaint? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes. This investigation was limited to Ms. Brooks' complaint. I was not charged by the city to interview city employees. I was charged by the CRA Board to investigate a CRA complaint.
Now you're saying you weren't charged by the city. If you were charged by the city, even though there was no complaint, you would have investigated and interviewed city employees?
Had I been charged by the city to do something, we would have developed some protocol. It is difficult, and let me back up. I have not looked at the city's policies or practices, but I will speak from what I understand are best practices. Most organizations that are covered either under Title VII of the Civil Rights Act of 1964 or under the Florida Civil Rights Act have very developed and very specific personnel policies regarding discrimination and harassment. Those policies do two things. They provide information to employees with respect to what they must do if they believe that they have been subjected to behavior that may rise to the level of unlawful harassment or discrimination. And they also provide the employer, in this case, the city, with an obligation of what it must do, okay? If an individual does not come forward with a complaint, there can be myriad reasons why the individual does not come forward with a complaint. And unless and until someone does come forward, there is a tension as to whether or not it is proper for an employer to poke and prod. Sometimes investigations can happen even when individuals don't come forward if there is competent evidence or a witness who says, "I saw this, this, and this happened." As far as I know, this does not exist within the city. No employee has come forward to say, "I believe that I have been harassed or discriminated by," I guess in the city side it would be Commissioner, Commissioner Merker. And as far as I know, there have been no, I said, as far as I know, I don't know. I would think that if someone had come forward and said, "I observed this behavior, and the behavior appeared to be harassing," then the city would more likely than not undertake its own investigation.
The reason I ask the question, because I guess I should have asked for clarity from Ken. I'm sitting here under the impression that it was going to be both CRA and city as far as the explanation, and I guess he was speaking in lawyer's terms, and I just charge it to my ignorance of lawyer's term, but I was certainly under the impression that it was going to include both CRA and city employees.
Actually, Board Member Hay, in response to the other questions, when the discussion first came up about having an investigation and hiring someone to do an investigation, I specifically recommended that the city undertake the investigation. At that time, for a major reason of that being, I had a concern about whether CRA funds could appropriately be used for this type of investigation. And I suggested to the board that there is no limitation, really, on the city's expenditure of funds, and I think there had been at least one or two comments about folks having heard of people outside of the CRA, if not complaining, at least talking about certain conduct. And it was very specifically said to me by at least one of the Board members, if not more than one, this was a CRA employee who has brought this complaint, and the CRA should be the entity to investigate it.
See, with that being said, Ken, I could have told you what the outcome was going to be, because now here we are with Vivian's word against David Merker's word, okay? And nobody else is going to come forth, even though it may have happened to them.
Well, first off, you've heard that there has been a specific finding of credibility by the person that we've chosen to do the investigation. Secondly, if there are folks who may have complaints out there, I think the fact that this kind of investigation has been done, findings made, and very publicly discussed, may or may not lead to others coming forward, if there has been any other such conduct. But that still remains up to any individual who feels that they have been treated appropriately. And only time will tell whether that occurs.
Ms. Hanley, I have one more question for you, please.
Yes, sir.
In the report here, I'll just read it for you, the sentence, "Merker is not familiar with the discrimination statutes and has not had training on discrimination or harassment either during his professional career or during his tenure as a Boynton Beach official." Is that your opinion, or was that his statements?
Those are my findings.
Those are your findings.
I understand that the CRA does not provide any training with regard to discrimination or harassment, and I learned that from Director Brooks. I also learned a very similar fact from City Manager. Which leads me to my recommendations. Yes, sir?
I'm waiting for him to call me, I'm just saying.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I'm kind of typing. Thank you. You know, my whole take is, you know, and that is that, first of all, this was an investigation that was done by the CRA. We was the one that told, you know, our counsel that we wanted this to be investigated. The complaint was brought by a Director of the CRA. We are representatives of the CRA. This was not a city employee. And I'm just saying, we don't need to get them crossed up, and I do, you know, respect, counsel, what you just said, Mr. Spilius, because you said everything that I needed to have said, you know, out in the open. It wasn't a city. It was a CRA issue, and that's where it was based at and kept at. No matter what we have heard in the city, CRA was the one that said, you know, let us go forward with the investigation, not for the entire city. Thank you.
Yes, you want to do your recommendations. If there's no other questions or comments.
I have two specific recommendations and two very general recommendations about what the CRA should do on a go-forward basis in order to keep behavior such as that which is complained about from occurring again. The first recommendation is perhaps the most fundamental of the recommendations. I believe that the CRA Board should be trained in the discrimination statutes about the nature of harassment, appropriate workplace behaviors, and the like. It is a best practice in business that organizations that are covered by the discrimination statutes conduct this training, at least on hire and probably once a year thereafter. They do it to ensure everybody within the organization has a level footing, if you will, with respect to the law, rule, and regulation, and what they should and should not do, what is lawful behavior and what is not lawful behavior. Even though the Civil Rights Act was passed in 1964, and we would think that knowledge of the discrimination statutes and harassment would be commonplace, it's not, okay? We still need to know, and we still need to understand what's involved, what is appropriate, what is not appropriate. Most individuals need notice, and I believe that it is incumbent on this group to ensure that all of its members have appropriate notice as to what is appropriate behavior and what is not. The second recommendation that I have is one that is already in place, and that is to ensure that CRA Board members adhere to the existing guidelines and guidance regarding meetings with executives and the staff of the CRA. The CRA's rules of governance provide, generally, and I am paraphrasing, that office visits by CRA Board members with the Executive Director and with other members of the CRA as arranged through the Executive Director should be by appointment and should be purposeful. I believe that if that rule of governance particularly is followed, it will certainly limit a lot of travel and traffic within the CRA. As to general recommendations, I mentioned early on that the CRA has a very small staff, a staff of 10. And when you have a staff of 10, you can't have all the disciplines and all the different administrative services that one might have in a very large organization such as the city does. In order to overcome that burden, the CRA and the city have entered into two interlocal agreements. The one that I will address today is the one that they entered into for human resources. That interlocal agreement provides for all sorts of day-to-day guidance with respect to human resources and human resources management, file management, and the like. It is my recommendation that the CRA use the benefits provided by the interlocal agreement and that they are paying for to their fullest extent. Finally, last but not least, I recommend that the CRA have Employment Council, its Employment Council, review its handbook, its papers, and its policies on a very regular basis. The employment and labor landscape right now is more volatile than it has been in many, many years. We are seeing challenges from agencies and organizations to basic human resources processes that have, in many cases, disrupted organizations entirely. We want to make sure that, and I would suggest that you all would wish to make sure, that the CRA has appropriate policies, practices, and procedures in place, that it is following best practices, and that it doesn't do something, either because, as I share in the report or in the recommendation, because of benign neglect, or because of some kind of well-meaning but inadvertent action that is not lawful, so.
Thank you.
That's it.
Thank you for your report. I'd like to make some comments here. First of all, what I brought up about Mr. Merker saying, I don't know if he said it or she said, she felt he hadn't received the Training for Discrimination Statutes and Harassment, either in his professional career or in Boynton Beach official. We are required to have ethics training every year, and we sign off with the clerk that we've had it. And I believe if we look back at the records, I'd be surprised if Mr. Merker didn't have that training, because he's required to have it. So, and, you know, to me, a lot of this behavior is very ethical behavior. As far as being trained on discrimination and harassment, I've had that on multiple occasions through my career, not just as a city official, but in the Air Force, and every job I've had, we've had to go through that kind of training. I'd be surprised if some of my other Board members haven't had the same thing. So to say you don't have that, and I'm not saying, I didn't hear that Mr. Merker said that, I heard you felt like he didn't get that training, but if Mr. Merker didn't get that training, really concerns me, because he is sitting here as a city commissioner and voted on the city's discrimination ordinances, and how that, how other people should act when it comes to discrimination. He's voting on ordinances that other people have to follow. And to tell me he's not familiar with it, that really concerns me. That's one thing.
Excuse me.
The second thing, no, let me finish.
For the record, I've taken the ethics.
Let it finish.
I'll give you a turn.
Let it finish.
Okay. So now, on your two findings, I think we asked for the investigation, and the investigation we want to know, did Mr. Merker inappropriately touch the Executive Director Vivian Brooks? And the answer is yes. According to you and your investigation, everything says yes, he did. So we got our answer there. The other answer was, did Merker engage in appropriate behavior with staff? The answer is yes. So the investigation confirmed both of those findings. That's what we need to know. And so I want to... (bell) Okay, we're going to call the meeting back to order. Thank you for your patience. The only problem was a little bit of an explosion in the microwave upstairs, so that was the problem. The, for the take-up back up where we left off, I was finishing my closing remarks. As we all know, there was a...
Have quiet, please.
Will we please have quiet, so we can continue the meeting? A complaint was made and investigated, and the investigator found the complaint to be valid in both instances, two different complaints. And so therefore, I believe it's the responsibility of this board to make sure that we provide an acceptable workplace for all our employees. So I'm going to make the two recommendations on how to handle this. I believe Mr. Merker has established a pattern of this type of unacceptable behavior. His actions have embarrassed the CRA Board and the city. Therefore, I am going to ask that tonight, the CRA Board make a motion to censure Mr. Merker this evening as an expression of disapproval towards this type of behavior. That's number one. Number two, I think this action that we take as a board, the CRA Board, should be forwarded to the City Commission with the recommendation that any future complaints of this type of behavior be attached to this report and sent to the Governor of the state for his action. That'd be my two recommendations. Does anybody on the board wish to make the first motion on the censure?
I need to find out, you're saying censor, censor for how long, sir?
It's just, it's an official censure, it just stays there.
So moved.
We don't accept that type of behavior.
So moved.
Is that...
Second.
The motion is a second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Show the motion passes five to two. The second recommendation was to, the action we took here should be forwarded to the City Commission with the recommendation that any future complaints of this type behavior be attached to this report and sent to the Governor of the state for his action. Is there a motion to that?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Show the motion passes five to two. I think that, go ahead.
I do have some closing remarks I'd like to make. As far as the specific recommendation that we all get training, I have a problem with that, as the mayor just, well, as the Chair just stated. We've all had this training in the past, and it's just common sense that we should know how to control our hands and we should know how to control our tongue. Also, on the next page, you talk about scheduling an appointment. I don't have a problem with that, because we sort of do that right now, but periodically there are times that I need to drop in and get a Q and A real quick, and it's not really necessary to have an appointment. If they can take me, they do. If they can't, they'll let me know. I don't want to tire my hands to the point that, I've been dealing with the CRA Board for the past eight years and even more than that, and I've never had a problem. It seems to me that we're all being penalized over one person's action, so I don't agree with that. I would like to for it to stay just like it is. And as far as someone coming up to make a complaint, and all due respect to HR, that's not going to happen. No one is going to initiate any negative comments or action against an elected official, so we're just not going to see that. I'd also like to say that as far as establishing a schedule, that's number two in your general recommendation. You said establish a schedule for regular review. That's something that HR should be doing right now anyway, and I'm pretty sure they are doing. I would, as I read this, I saw some comments in here, and it just seems to me that Mr. Merker, he says that he's an avid reader of history. It seems to me that he need to put down some of those history books and pick up and read the HR policies and procedures manuals, and particularly pages 15 of 90, and also read the Boynton Beach CRA rules and procedures. I don't feel that we need to be going through all of this that we're going through. Everybody up here is a professional. We are mature, and for persons who can't control their hands and tongue, they're missing the boat. So I'm somewhat appalled to the fact that you say that we don't have training. We need to have training and all that kind of stuff. I've had a whole lot of training, and I just think some of us up here need to grow up. And so I don't know any better. It's what the mayor is saying here, that we need to sanction Mr. Merker, as has already been passed, and any further action like this should be forwarded to a higher body, because we've gone through and spent a lot of money to try to create a positive image for Boynton Beach. We rebranded our city, and we're moving in the right direction. I talk with developers and all the time, get phone calls, even though I'm not on the commission now, but the fact remains that they're thinking positive about us. But now, when they Google Boynton Beach and they come up and see disparity at the top end, they just shun Boynton Beach and go to Delray or West Palm or someplace else. I really feel we need to put this all behind us, deal with it like we should. We've made the decision, we voted, and now we're moving in the right direction. But I would like to just say to all these up here that are on the commission and this particular CRA Board, conduct ourselves as professionals. Common sense to tell you that you can't just say and do anything to people. That's a given. So forgive me if I'm rambling, but it just, it saddens my spirit that we take five feet forward and three back. I'm getting to the point now that it's very sickening to me to have to go through this. So guys, just do the right thing, because it's the right thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else, any closing? Go ahead.
Mr. Chair, thank you. First of all, Board Member Hay used the word sanction. It wasn't sanction, it was censor. We did censor Mr. Merker.
Excuse me for the misuse of word.
Thank you. My whole take is that, first of all, we hired the attorney to do the investigation, which is over with now. Nobody can give me a figure, that's the main thing I'm concerned with. I want to know how much money did we spend out of the CRA budget? That was my first concern. I'm glad that this investigation is over. Maybe now we can move Boynton ahead and let sleeping dogs lie. I'm just saying, maybe they said we're not on a witch hunt now. You know, I'm just saying, everything is out in the open. Everybody's grown, you all said. Let's act like grown people, and I'm just saying, you know, stop trying to bicker on one person or beat one person down. We've all made mistakes. I'm just saying, you know, he without, who has not made a mistake, cast a stone. I'm just saying, this is over with. Let's put it to rest. We voted on it, and let's move Boynton on, and let's go on to commission meeting. I'm tired.
Okay, no other comments?
Mr. Chairman, I'm not going to pile on. I think everything that needs to be said has been said, but what's concerning me is Board Member McCray's statement that, how much does this cost and how much this is cost? How can you put a price on the safety of our employees that work for the city? If it costs $10,000 to get to the bottom and get an answer, it's money well worth spent. I think that to put a dollar figure on someone's safety and well-being in a workplace is way off-base, so I take a little offense to that.
Okay, let me comment on that. Okay, first of all, I did not say the money was not well-spent. I just said, I would like to know how much did we spend? I did not say that we were spending money foolishly. Nobody go out and say this, I just want to know how much was spent, that's all. Like, why should I question a price, you know, whether we're spending government money? That's all I was doing, was questioning that, sir.
I don't think the total's been done yet, because she's here tonight, where she's got her time here, that's going to be added. Okay. And nothing else to be done? We will adjourn the CRA meeting.